Commercial zoning district. Although it's purely speculation, it's possible that the condition was proposed at the last hearing due to the mistaken belief that the property was in the village district, which is nearby the property. In any event, Mr. McKenzie seeks to, or has been, excuse me, operating a successful business in town for the past several years, and like many commercial businesses, he periodically has a need to keep equipment and materials outside of the physical building. He doesn't intend to have any permanent outside storage of any particular pieces of equipment or materials in any specific areas. It's not like a lumberyard where there'd be a stack of lumber in one place outside indefinitely, but he does periodically have the need to have certain pieces of equipment, like tractors, excavators, equipment trailers, pieces of HVAC equipment, and so on, in the, on the property. Historically, since he's been at the property, he has been doing that, and if you take a look at the plan, the area that we're using is the existing gravel parking lot in the back of the property. I'll step back right here and shade it on this plan. I have an area of the nature of the property as well to give you a sense of what things look like. This is the gravel parking lot that we're talking about right here. As an area, you can see there's a couple of trailers that people park down in the form right here. The parking lot is set very far back from each public road. It's well screened, it's not visible to the public, and it's on a property that's about nine acres, so we have a lot of space out there to use and the ability to put things in areas that are well protected and not unsightly. As I said, he's been doing this for several years, he hasn't had any complaints from neighbors over that time. The reality is that that is a parking lot, that gravel area right now, and, I mean, just thinking about it practically, whether there's cars parked out there in that parking lot or whether there's a piece of equipment or a trailer sitting in that parking lot, you know, one, it's not really visible from anywhere, but two, even if it were, that impact isn't really any different, whether it's a car or a piece of equipment. The one other thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, Mr. McKenzie has been a good business citizen in Newton for the past several years. If you just go by the property or take a look at his shop, you'll see that he's not the type of person to let things get run down or look unsightly. If you look at the property today compared to how it looked when he bought it, you'll see that. The landscaping's nice, he's maintained the building and improved that quite a bit, so it's not in his business interest to have anything out there in terms of outside storage or otherwise that looks bad or makes it seem like it's an unprofessional business in any way. So, we're simply asking to remove that one condition, preventing outside storage, to allow Mr. McKenzie to store equipment and materials periodically in that gravel parking lot to the rear. We think he's within his rights to do so under the restrictions in the zoning ordinance, and we do appreciate your patience in having us back for a second hearing. We realized that this condition was discussed at the prior hearing, and quite frankly, we think there was a little bit of confusion on the applicant's part in terms of the permanency and scope of that condition, once we saw the notice of the decision, and also perhaps on the board's part in terms of the basis for that restriction in the first instance.
Okay. Jen?
Just, this is a little unusual for the board. You typically have a conditional approval and then have somebody come back and ask about that one condition, so just to humor me and I'm just procedurally going to go through this, because they are, this is technically a compliance hearing, which means that we're not talking about a full site plan, the only thing that is really up for discussion is that, and it can be related, things related to, but is that condition of outside storage, any other condition of approval that you gave, which this happens to be a copy of the notice of decision, would still stand? But you can modify or eliminate that outside storage if you so choose. So, things like getting the life safety codes in order and a few other things that are conditions of approval already have to stand unless they were to ask for a compliance hearing to remove those conditions. So, it's really just that outside storage component that's up for discussion, and that's effectively, you will have to take jurisdiction over this application for the condition to be potentially modified. You don't have to modify, that can also be a decision. So, you do have a complete application for the type of hearing that this is, because it's really just what they're asking to do and the plan has had been updated, so.
Okay, so we need to take jurisdiction before we can even act upon this?
Yep, and you, we'll also have to have a public hearing to allow any abutters about, and it's just related to the outside storage condition that they are asking for.
Does the outside storage consist of propane tanks or just trucks, equipment, tractors, whatever you said?
It could, those were just examples, so it could run the gamut. At the last hearing, there was a discussion of the fact that currently, or at least at the last hearing, I don't know if currently tonight, there were some propane tanks that were out there, and so, you know, for an example, if a, they're typically empty propane tanks, but if a propane tank comes out to Newton to go out on a job and they have a scheduling issue, homeowner isn't home, something like that, they can't get into the property, can't get it in that day, sometimes they'll get dropped at the Newton location rather than driven all the way back to Seabrook to come back for a job. So, to answer your question, yes, there are periodically propane tanks.
So, that still wouldn't qualify for the safety analyst's report?
That, so, the outside storage, you can ask about what's being stored, that's certainly a reasonable question to ask.
But actually, one of the other conditions, there's no hazardous materials, would be stored, other than the 255 gallon drums.
Correct.
So, a propane tank, that's being moved, that has propane in it, would be hazardous material.
So, that gets into a nuance of, you are not allowed to store toxic or hazardous material, as is defined under federal and state law, in your aquifer district, which effectively this entire site is. Propane, because of its nature, while it is a byproduct of petroleum product, it is not actually considered a toxic or hazardous material in that regard. For aquifer protection, very specifically, it will not go into the aquifer, it will evaporate. So, just the physics of it.
So, there's nothing that can leak down into the aquifer? Okay.
That does not mean you wouldn't have other concerns. You know, a completely brand-new, empty tank is effectively a metal shell. If there is propane in it from a different safety component and maybe beyond the, that's certainly something you can discuss.
Okay, all right.
So, I would take a.
Yeah, I was going to say, do I have a motion to take jurisdiction so we can discuss this further?
Yes, I'll make a motion, we take jurisdiction.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, all right.
So, now, from what you said, because we took jurisdiction, did you say that we have to post it again?
No, no, so this, abutters were notified, hence I think one of the reasons why you have someone in the audience, so abutters were notified, this was posted again, but it's just for that component of the application.
Right.
Or of the approval.
I do have one other, on the conditions we had last time, and you referred to it, those empty propane tanks, we had said they were supposed to be removed.
Yes.
Have they been? Or are we, should we also take that, that sort of like, the outside storage was sort of handled in two different.
Right.
Conditions.
So, the existing propane tanks would be, were to be removed within 90 days of that approval?
Right.
Which we're still well within that.
But I believe what he's asking is.
What I'm saying is, when he's asking that we remove the restriction on outside storage, should we also then, just to make everything neat, also remove that condition?
Given that it's related, you can remove.
Yeah, right.
It makes sense that they're tied together.
Right, let them have storage beyond the 90 days, we should let them, leave them there now if they're still there.
So, then we would, we're talking about removing condition number one, which is stored propane tanks that we gave him 90 days to remove, and then for the no outside, no outside storage.
Right.
We wanted to remove those two.
Right.
That's what they would like us to do, okay?
Right.
So, I didn't bring my big book. Is he, right, is he correct? Like, doesn't our site plan, we can limit what is stored outside even though we're within the light industrial or commercial zone?
So, within this zoning district, he's absolutely correct, there is no outright prohibition on outside storage in the commercial district.
Right.
You do have that within your village district. You are allowed to, within reason, restrict outside storage on commercial sites, you know, let's say it happened to be a junkyard, I'm not saying this site is a junkyard, and it was going to cause a visual impact to a certain neighbor, you could limit it or restrict it in some form. An outright prohibition is a little harder to justify.
But we could set a limit, like it has to be a fenced area, you can only have so many?
You can, you can restrict the location, you know, if visual is part of it, you could certainly require that a fence be put up to help mitigate that impact. If there's other health, safety, or welfare components that you want to impose to mitigate what might be stored outside, you can certainly do that.
Because also too, when looking at this map, that other lot, there's a point, and it comes really close to this supposedly parking area, so that parking lot for the church has visible view to that storage area, even though like, and from the road, I, you can see, like those tanks that are still there, you can still see those. So, then I didn't know too if we should tell them, like, is there, how far off that property line, like?
You, you could if you chose to, you know, with the visual, I would be, I would tread lightly because, just because somebody, it's a business, so of course, business materials would be there.
Right. But don't we have something about how far off of property line you can store things or have storage?
Well, structures are not supposed to be.
Yeah, these would not be.
Within 25 feet, but that's, they're not considered, that's not considered a structure.
Okay.
They do have to have jersey barriers around them, the tanks.
Actually, what's the, what's the zoning for the church?
I don't know.
This, this whole area is commercial, it's about three or four lots that are commercial.
Even the, even the.
Yes, the church is owned.
The church is owned, commercial?
Yes.
And then Frank's, because Frank's is on the other side.
And a lot, and a lot, that's it.
So, that was, because on the plan, he shows the 200 foot, that's back, that's why I figured with a different zone.
And just to clarify, you're proposing to allow for outside storage to be only over in the gravel parking lot in the back, correct?
Correct.
One concern I have about that, especially with the, it's not even the visual, with the potential for heavy equipment and trucks, is that is in part within your wetland buffer. The entire lot is within your aquifer. Heavy equipment sitting there, things leak, I mean, it's not necessarily going to decimate any water supply or any wetland, but it is very close to your wetlands in the entire site, on a gravel parking lot is over your aquifer. Probably some of the other equipment is not as much of a concern for potential contamination, but it is within your wetland buffer and some components.
But the heavy equipment, regular trucks are one thing, but the heavy equipment is something else.
It's not even so much it being on the site and, you know, occasionally dropping something off, and it's sitting there, that would be more of the concern, of on an, on a not impervious surface. While gravel is largely impervious, it is not completely, and it's very hard to clean up a spill if it's on gravel.
I would say that I think that that risk exists with any gravel parking lot anywhere, whether there are leaks from cars or heavy equipment, and if this is used just as a parking lot, you know, even with the outdoor storage condition, I don't think that prevents a piece of equipment sitting out there on a trailer behind a truck in a parking lot the way it could in any parking lot, so I'm not sure the risk is really any different.
On the trailer may be different, yeah.
But I would, I also would say to the earlier point I made about Scott being a good business citizen and running a professional business, I mean, he maintains his stuff well, he's not going to have a piece of equipment sitting out there that's, you know, spewing oil into the ground, he has an excavator and he has a tractor that he uses, both small pieces of equipment to go out on jobs, so for those to be operable and not damage customers' properties, they're going to be well maintained.
Would there be any reason to not store those two pieces of equipment on the paved portion of the parking lot?
I don't know what, I mean, the paving is pretty expensive. I mean, I own, who's the pay, I'm not sure when the pay gets paid, but the two pieces of equipment have a virtually brand-new, small, it's not heavy, but it's a mini excavator and a disc, and both, I think, are 2015, 2019.
So, for what it's worth, I am not trying to imply you don't run a good business and maintain your, this is more worst-case scenario.
I'm not sure they have more than what a truck would hold for oil, so, I mean, obviously they have hydraulic fluid in them and diesel, but I don't think they have much more than a, a full truck.
The other thing too, just to address that question, is one of the benefits to having it stored in the back parking lot instead of the front area where it's going to be paved, is it's, you know, out of the way for employee and customer traffic, but also less sightly and further away from the road where it's visible.
Okay. Excuse me, ma'am, you'll have to wait until we open the floor to a butters, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just have another thought.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't have the original permit or his application with me, but I think when he came originally for the minor site plan, it was because he wanted office space, and it was for more or less an office-type operation, not any outside storage or storing tractors or, so now I think he's getting a little bigger than his original application for the minor site plan.
They did originally apply to expand their parking lot and to effectively do a change of use to the office use.
On the last, I mean, did?
From the original, from the approval when they came in, last month.
And just to clarify that point, the, the office use is a component of the business out there. I mean, we've been clear all along that this is a heating and cooling business, so they do service calls out of here, they do the office work, like billing, dispatching, and so on, but it's also where they store, you know, parts in the building and equipment outside, where customers can come in and pay their bills, customers can come in and pick up parts, so there's unquestionably just a retail component to it, all the uses are permitted uses under the zoning ordinance, it was just the town had asked us to come in for a change of use from the prior commercial business to our commercial business, and there is an office component to it, but also just retail and general business.
Okay. Do we have any other board discussion? Okay, I'm going to open up the floor to a butters, ma'am, if you'd like to come up to the podium and give your name and ask your question. And you'll have to speak loud enough so we could hear it on the.
Oh, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Okay.
My name's Karen O'Malley, and my property backs up to theirs on the other side of the brook, and I have some concerns about leakages and other things that could contaminate the brook and the wetlands that are right behind there, and the parking lot that they're talking about is, is on the top of the ridge, and it just drops right off into the wetlands, and there's a, there's a brook right there, so I have some concerns about that.
Okay, thank you.
I will note that that gravel parking lot is a non-conforming pre-existing gravel parking lot, it wouldn't be allowed in that exact configuration if they were to come in today for a new site, but it's already existing, so.
Okay. All right, all right. If we don't have any more discussion from the board, would someone like to make a motion? Well, maybe we need to talk about, is there anything that we need to add to, if we were for, for any outside storage, or is it all covered by the, only hazardous material may be stored in those drums?
I would strongly recommend a, if you're going to allow outside storage specifically for any tanks that may come in, that are not brand-new and thus never, have never had, that all fuel is to be removed from them prior to them coming on site. And I understand that might not be 100% what the applicant is asking for, but to help protect, do some protection for potential leakage or health and safety, but also be compliant with the other components.
He just said that wouldn't happen.
I, I'm, full propane, not, I'm sorry, so you're not having full propane tanks coming on to the site?
But he said that wouldn't happen if the customer wasn't home, there'd be propane in the tank. But they're always 20% full, right?
Well, not when they're brand-new. When they're brand-new, there's nothing in them, they're empty, it's a steel shell.
If they're filled, then they go to 20.
Once they're filled, there's always a remainder in the, in the tank, is my understanding, so I'm not sure it's possible to fully remove everything out of the tanks, but for the most part, any tanks that are going to be on site are going to be empty, it's not going to be the case universally, there may be tanks that have fuel in them or, you know, otherwise on the site periodically, but the points that you made earlier were, I thought, valid and well-made points about the fact that there's not a risk to the aquifer from propane being in a, in a tank, it can't contaminate the aquifer based on the inherent properties of the, of the material.
That is true, it's just other health or safety impacts that may, it is a combustible material, I understand it's in a tank, but this is also near residence.
So, I'd be happy to have Scott talk a little bit about the properties of propane, if you'd like to hear it, but propane is generally a very low-risk material, it's non-explosive, it can't contaminate groundwater, it simply evaporates if it leaks out of the, out of the tank. If you're interested in hearing more about it, I'm sure he could educate all of us better than I can, but that's the thought, is it's generally a very safe substance with few risks.
I'm okay with that explanation.
I just have one question, is it sometimes oil too, is it oil and propane he does, so there's a possibility an oil tank might be there? Like, if we say you can store tanks outside, would it be a possibility that an oil tank might show up?
No. All right. Okay. I'm just trying to get a hold of the data. So, I would need.
So, two more questions then, so if you vote to lift it, can we still get this safety analyst's report and an occupancy permit, or?
So, those, those conditions that are required would still stand, so, any motion that you make, I would also, you can reaffirm that you want and all other conditions shall remain the same?
Correct.
Which gets to that.
Right, and we can restate them if we want.
Yep, if that's helpful.
So, so what they're, what they are actually asking for is to remove condition number one, which is remove stored propane, propane tanks within 90 days of the notice, and the no outside storage, and we could put a note that says any outsored, outside tanks stored, all fuel will be removed?
It sounds to me like if you're going to do that, it needs to have a clause as to practically, to the practical extent possible, because.
Up to 20%, it's usually 20%.
Yeah, I can't really.
Okay.
So, all fuel oil, it has to be removed, and if it's propane, it can be up to 20% again.
Right, but there, he's already said there's not going to be any other kind of fuel oil, he doesn't have oil there, he only has propane.
You actually, he would be out of compliance with your zoning, to store, to store any petroleum-based products, so any heating oil, unless it's to heat the building.
Yeah, right.
Anything else, but propane falls outside of that.
Because that, that would still fall under our other hazardous material restriction.
Okay.
So, on his own admission, he said that possibly tanks might be there for a short amount of time because they, like, in transit, didn't get to go where they were supposed to go?
Right.
So, can we set a limit as to how long or how many?
No.
Can be there?
We can't, because we don't, that's not in our ordinance to do that in a commercial zone.
I mean, effectively, you, you can restrict the location and a scope of where they're storing, they're proposing to put it in the gravel parking lot, so that's considered, that's their proposal, I mean, you could constrain that more.
We should put it in there then.
If you wanted to, but.
That any outdoor storage should be at the gravel parking lot?
It is noted on the plan that they.
Is it going to keep it on there?
And it's note 16, it says outside storage shall be limited to, within the limits of the existing gravel parking area.
Perfect.
So, that's already noted on their application.
Okay. We don't have, there's no outside storage isn't on the notes, is it, so we don't have to worry about.
He took it off.
Okay, that's fine.
In anticipation of us approving it, you, you prepared the, the plan the way you would like it to go.
So, we revised the plan to show you what we're proposing, and we replaced the no outdoor storage note with the note that says limited to the gravel parking area.
Okay, because I was just looking to see if that was there that needed to be removed. Okay, thank you.
It was previously, thank you.
Okay.
He, okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve his request to remove the requirements of our previous approval, to remove the first one about removing the stored propane tanks within 30 days, and also to remove the requirement that the, the plan note that there be no outside storage.
And did.
And to reaffirm all of the other conditions that, of the approval that we gave last night.
Did we want to add any outside tanks stored, fuel will be removed from up to 20, for up to 20%?
I don't think it's really necessary, but.
It's just standard 20%.
Okay, that's fine, then if we don't need to say that, then we don't need to say that.
They abide by all the other safety requests that we put in there.
Number one, remove one.
And they will have to have jersey barriers too, correct?
Okay.
The jersey barriers, if you're storing tanks, you have to have the cement barriers in front of them, if any car has access to that area.
Is that a town requirement or state requirement?
It's a state law. If you go like the Blue Rhino, what?
This is a common style of tanks.
If you go down to Hafnitz down there, they have jersey barriers in front of their tanks.
So, we can, we can look into the state law, certainly if there's a state law that's outside of this board's jurisdiction and we have to comply with it for how they're stored, then it's a state law, we'll have to comply with it.
Because that is written on here, right? Yeah, the compliance with the state and local permits, so if that is required, which I agree, then they would have to abide by that.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, that's unanimous. I, would you like me to go over the conditions then? Would you like me to restate the conditions?
I don't believe you need to.
Okay.
For our benefit, number one is removed on the top, and number one, number two is removed under the recorded plan.
Right.
Condition, so I think we have the list, otherwise we can see what the other ones are and we understand they're reaffirmed.
All right, that's fine. I would like to remind Mr. McKenzie that at a point in time, he had started to fill out, it was brought to my attention by code enforcement, he had filled out an application for a business occupancy certificate, but didn't go any further to get the rest of the items completed, I think he needs signatures of different, the fire department and the building inspector and whatever, so if Mr. McKenzie would complete that through code enforcement to get his business occupancy.
... requirements, if that's what locals are looking at.
Yeah, well, this was the first, I think, one of the steps to be able to get the occupancy.
This is one of the steps, and then now, once you get everything okayed from here, then you can go down to code enforcement and complete the rest of the application.
The purpose over here.
Correct, correct, okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing. Next on the agenda is approval of the August 13th minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting on 8/13/19, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, manifests. Thank you, okay. NEPR and the amount of $335.39, but our notice, recording fees, and mileage to the registry.
Second.
Who made the first one?
I thought you were.
Move to page.
Okay.
It's not in front of me, I can't read it.
Okay, Roger and Larry, thank you. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. And NEPR, operating expense, you gave it to me backwards, that's fine.
Fine, I, I know, but I didn't...
Roger and Larry.
I, I have that.
Okay.
I didn't put the NHMA on here yet because I'm waiting for the check to come back, so it's, I gotta find out with Kim how she wants it.
Okay, all right. Operating budget, telephone, public hearing, and so that's $329.44.
Move to page.
Second. Go to Jim.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I'll sign that in a minute. Correspondence.
I did pass out the one thing that I received yesterday, it was too late to send it out to anybody, from Kim Hughes regarding the operating budget.
Oh, I didn't see that.
It's here, I think I have a copy of it.
I just put, I just put a copy over there.
Okay. Under manifest part.
This came up, again, this is something that Kim has mentioned previously, about where we canceled two meetings in a row, there were bills that had to be paid, we had no, no manifest. State doesn't require that we actually do a manifest.
Just turn the bills in?
Right.
And you didn't, or somebody didn't turn it in?
I, I had to, it was, you know, Kim looked at me and she reminded me that the town does not like to pay late fees.
Oh, absolutely. That's what I'm saying, so can't they get turned in and then voted on at your next meeting?
Does, she put this forward to see how we want, how the board...
I think for the choice that happened, we should keep it the same, it's happened once a year, you know?
Well, it's a lot more, more efficient to get the bills paid, and they...
She did mention that most of what we do as far as bills, like the telephone bill, we have no choice, it's getting paid, it's coming out of our account, period.
Right.
Other things like the circuit rider contract, we actually vote to approve that, or actually the board votes to approve that, as a motion that is minuted.
Mm-hmm.
So that wouldn't need to be...
Oh, we would need to create a separate letter for her for that then? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, no, they, they wouldn't, anything, anything that the board votes, you know, the board votes to, and this is only operating budget, this is not NEPR stuff, this is just operating budget.
Okay.
You know, the board votes to hold a public hearing on site plan regulation changes, therefore it doesn't need to go on a manifest because it's already minuted that that has been approved.
Okay.
She's just looking at a way to streamline, and like I said, where we, where we canceled two meetings in a row...
Which doesn't usually happen, but, but it could, depending, I mean, or else it means we're going to have a meeting and we're going to come in and we're just going to say, okay, we approved this and then we go home, and that doesn't make quite, quite a lot of sense either.
Exactly.
So...
They don't run into problems with late payments out of NEPR? How about like, like, when, cause when things get, yeah, okay, go ahead.
This, this is the operating budget.
Right.
Where we hit late payments, NEPR it really doesn't matter, the, the extra dollar and 10 cents, okay, gets, regretfully it gets charged to somebody else's account.
Wasting money is wasting money.
I, I agree with you a whole lot of the Roger. However, this has to do with the, you know, the town, like legal fees. We incurred the bill, and the bill came in a month and a half ago, luckily we haven't, we have council that doesn't charge us a late fee, but some, some places do. The bill for the last public hearing that we had, I signed off on it prior to there being a manifest because they charge us like three and a half percent.
Mm-hmm.
That, that adds up.
Right.
So if we change our procedure, how do we know what's going to get paid?
I think it's, I think it's just going to be the same as it is, but I will look at this and say, this is what, we're approving this, it's already been paid.
Yeah.
That's the only...
Do we need to change our procedures, or is it written somewhere what we do?
No.
No, it's going to remain the same, but if you miss a meeting, then he's just asking to submit the bills before your next meeting.
So should we say if we miss a meeting, then we'll do it that way, or if we say we're all still doing it that way?
I, I think you're better off doing, always doing it that way, and we'll, we'll still be informed of where the money's going and...
Right.
And if there are already problems...
But that's why, instead of getting a manifest, what you'll get is something that looks like the manifest, but doesn't have to go to the treasurer.
It'll be a report from the bookkeeper rather than a, than a request to the treasurer.
It'll be a report from the administrative assistant.
Cause right now, it kind of looks like, it looks like this.
Yeah.
And it just gives a breakdown of the different things to read.
So it can still look like that, like you said, but it'll just say, these are what we did pay already.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
It'll always be paid.
Right.
Cause I think we do, you know, we...
Because the, the bookkeeper doesn't need a copy of the manifest.
Right.
She gets copies of the minutes.
And the book.
And, and that justifies, like, right at the moment, there's the New Hampshire Municipal Association law lectures that are, that will be on the next manifest.
Right.
But it's already been paid because it had to be paid by...
And we voted to pay, like, pay people to go.
Correct.
Exactly.
Correct. Ahead of time.
Yes.
Right.
So I guess about, my question is, what does the motion have to say to achieve what we're talking about achieving?
If we don't have a procedure, we can't vote to change a procedure.
Well, we can, yeah, well...
We can just change it without it being like written as a procedure.
Right.
Right, all you have to do is...
My consensus, you're all acceptable to the bills get paid when they come in, I don't think you need to vote on that.
Or authorize the administrative assistant to sign off the bills.
Make a report of what she paid though, right? Like, yeah.
Yeah, cause you still have to vote, you still have to vote to pay it.
Right.
It's just going to be at a later date.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, well, I don't think we need to make a motion then, do we? I mean, we're discussing it and we're all...
I, I will speak to Kim on Thursday and see if she wants some sort of a motion to...
Okay.
I mean, she...
Get, get whatever wording she wants, so...
Right.
If she wants any wording.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so that takes care of that. The other item is, who wants a law book?
A law book?
It's time for the annual books.
Everybody's supposed to have it.
Time to order your new book.
Yeah, that's, that's the old one.
Right.
Well, the current one.
Right.
Right, that's, yeah.
Hopefully I'm not here long enough to get one.
It will not come until January, so...
Right, okay, but we need to know, okay.
Hopefully not.
Okay, I need one, you need one, do you need one?
You can have mine, Jim.
Okay.
All right, tell you that.
Hopefully.
Mom and I each get a free one because the...
And don't forget one for...
Well, yeah, Michael.
Jim probably doesn't need one.
Excuse me?
Jim probably doesn't need one.
Yeah, he does, he wants one, so, nah, nah, he did, actually...
Not, not that Jim, Holland.
Oh.
I, I got, I got a, I got a free one as an OPC.
No, he's talking about Jim Holland.
Oh, okay.
No, he won't need one.
We have too many Jims.
We do.
And mom and I always donate, we keep one, cause we each, we each get one as an OPC, we keep one and we donate one to the town.
Okay, you don't have to order me one.
Okay.
Only because I'm going to get it from the other town.
Okay.
They can pay for my book.
Two, four, five.
We give each town two books and each commissioner gets a book if they want one.
Right, yeah. Okay. I wanted to bring up Hefner's site plan.
Okay.
You know, we asked them to give us an amended, so that we could know what the current thing, we had them, had those tanks on, on the plan and everything. We're, we're kind of in the process of trying to figure out how we're going to work this because they went to, they went to get it recorded, and they said there wasn't room. They...
No, they took, they took it to the registry to have it previewed for recording, to make sure that there was nothing missing, and they were told that the registry wouldn't record it because they didn't have room to store them anymore.
There's been a little bit of a sea change of the county registry of deeds, where they will, they will no longer record drainage plans or landscaping plans, and they will only record site plans if it shows the, the entire means and bounds, meaning the property boundary of the entire site.
Right.
Now, this doesn't specifically apply to Hefner, which has a smaller site, but if you had a very big site, and you were only doing, you were only having that site plan for a small portion of that site, which happens on very big lots where it might be very wet, planning boards will often, they often have the condition in their site plan regulations that all of the means and bounds of the property are shown, but if it's that sort of situation, big property, small portion being actually dealt with, boards will often waive that you don't need to show the full means and bounds. Where my office is sort of advising people at this point, don't, don't do that, make them show the full means and bounds if you're going to make them record the site plan, which for major site plans is typically recorded.
Right.
Because then they just get into a situation where the registry won't record it until the full means and bounds are done. And that doesn't change a planning board approval, but they have to go out and survey the whole property with the means and bounds to get it recorded, so it almost takes more time inadvertently, it wasn't the developer or the planning board in those situations, but it's happened a few times. It sets people back several months and costs a lot of money potentially.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I just don't understand how something like the registry of deeds can run out of room.
Well, and the other component is that planning boards can't revoke a site plan unless it's been recorded. So if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds, your statutory authority to revoke a site plan with you, I've only ever been through once in any of my towns, but that's sort of that stick that the, that's the only authority the planning board has once a site plan is out of their approval process.
Okay, so then what would you suggest, so that we can get that plan recorded?
So my suggestion is that plan be revised, and it, it can be with the applicant's land surveyor, to take off components, and I made suggestions like some of the landscaping, some of the topographic information, keep all of the notes, keep all of the basic information that is like where the tanks are, and it can be reference that the full plan set is on file with the town of Newton in the planning board office.
Okay.
Basically a stripped down version of their approval, of their plan, doesn't mean it's not the approved plan, but it's a stripped down version of what you saw that night that you approved it, so that that can get recorded.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And they are mand, that's mandatory that they will do that then?
Well, because one of their conditions is that they get, or that they have a recorded MYLAR, that they, you can sort of let them know that that's one way that they can work on getting it recorded.
Could you, could you send me that list of, or could you send it to...
I can give a list, I can send a list of suggested things that they could take off, potentially take off.
That would be helpful, yeah, send it to the planning board office and then we can...
Yeah, I can, I can crawl.
You just give it to them and say...
Yeah, I think those are some of the things, and some of the drainage that's on there could come off as well.
Okay.
Really just the buildings, the tank, the property extent, wetlands, definitely can still be shown.
And the snow storage area.
Yes, that's very important.
Okay.
It was a big issue, so it's important.
And now, so I'm just saying, the full plan set though, or the page that they took to get recorded and they said no, that should still be part of the plan set, that's still what you approved, nothing that got approved would change.
Right.
But you would just have more sheets in the plan set that would be on file.
Right.
Does that make sense?
So we'll keep, we'll keep the original one with all the landscaping stuff on it, and then we'll have the stripped down one would be the one that would be recorded?
Yeah, exactly.
So why on that can we restrict things so much and keep track of things, but on this one, we couldn't tell him where to put his tanks, or that he couldn't have put the tanks, or we...
You could tell him where to put the tanks, it's just, you're balancing the, you don't have a specific in your zoning ordinance, no outside storage, you can restrict where somebody is doing the outside storage, and I'm going to say, within reason.
Right, so we could have done that here.
Like you can't store the tanks in the wetland in that particular case, that one.
Hefner's had them stored where the snow melted.
Yeah, they, they stored, they put the tanks in the snow storage area, but Hefner's was, the existing plan that's recorded does not show, I believe it's three variances that they received from the ZBA.
Right, and that's where we had them update.
That's, that needed to be on a plan somewhere, preferably a recorded plan.
Right. And I, is, I think maybe since we're at, I don't even know if it's too late to say, okay, somewhere in our ordinance, maybe we want to put there that we have the right to, to say about outside storage in the commercial area and whatever.
Oh, so if you want to, you know, change what the zoning ordinance says about commercial, outside storage in commercial areas, we can change that, actually, and I've got something, and we're in the right time of year to be discussing that, so if you want...
Yeah, I think, I think it would be wise to do that, because I think it would be good to be able to have the ability to say, yes, you can put that there, or no, you cannot.
Most towns may not have a comment about outside storage in a commercial area, and it would just then fall under your site plan regulations that, you know, outside storage may, has to be screened, it has to, can't be within X number of feet of a property line, or that can be modified by the planning board.
Well, maybe if you have, if you have some suggestive language, that would be good.
I can try to work something out.
It'd be a lot easier to, to put it in the site plan regulations.
For something like outside storage, it allows more flexibility.
Right.
Because every, every property is different.
Right.
And everything that people might want to store is different.
Right, okay.
I do have something else for you though, if we're all done with the Hefner.
What?
We talked about this last time, we can talk about it in more detail at the next meeting, but this is the conversation we had about...
Take one and pass it around.
Take one and pass it around, about variances, old variances and special exceptions.
Okay, you mean things that should expire?
Yes, so in 2013, the legislature passed that special exceptions and variances not used within two years go away, you have, if you still want that, you got to go back through the process.
If you have an extra one, Sandra, would you...
There should be a couple extra.
Yeah, because we'll need one for Michael.
And I can, oh, I can email this to Jim, I just printed it since I was on one here.
Yeah, you can make copies.
But what they did, what the legislature did not address was a variance or a special exception granted before August of 2013. So something that was granted in 1978, technically today, that variance or special exception, barring health and safety things, would still be legal. An easy example is someone in 1978 got a variance to have two houses on their piece of property, the property has sold a couple of times, that variance though, goes with the land, it doesn't go with the property owner, so if that 1978, you can have two houses on the same piece of property, if they went to bill, pull a building permit today, and it meant everything else, all the setbacks, they would be allowed to have two houses on that property.
Tear one down and build a new, new house in that, in the place of it.
No, 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 they could keep the same, one house and put a completely separate house, if that's the variance they got.
Okay.
And variances were not generally, you know, farther back you go, the poorer they were written, didn't consider things like setbacks from wetlands and property lines and wells and septic systems, so...
Right.
That's just my example, but the legislature this, back in, not this past session, the session before, wrote into the zoning, and I've highlighted the two RSAs, that allows I've highlighted the two RSAs, that allows towns the option to enact an expiration to those pre-2013 variances or special exceptions that haven't been utilized. And the way you do that, and you don't have to go researching everything, because that, I'm sure there are some honestly crazy variances and special exceptions existing legally out there right now.
In a cardboard box somewhere.
In a cardboard box somewhere. Is that if, so if you were to take the two proposed zoning sections, which I've got as section 10, which is your sort of general provision, if you were to add it, this was just the easiest place I saw to add these.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And if it was voted on in the next town meeting on March 20th, I'm sorry, on March 12th of next year, I forgot that date, right?
Yep.
March 10th of next year, the town would post in two public places a notice that says all existing, and you would post it for one year, "All existing special exceptions or variances existing prior to 2013 must be utilized by 2021." March 11th of 2021, or they will expire. So you are giving someone effectively two years' notice, I'm sorry, one year's notice that they need, that they have to use it within two years. So they're really getting a three-year notice, and I realize people don't necessarily look at the notice boards everywhere, but if you put it online, that's a place that counts. You're giving them a grace period to use it before it expires. So you're not taking away anybody's legal right to do something that they've had for a long time, and probably most people don't know they even have such a variance. But the problem is you don't know what's out there.
Right.
So this is an option that you can consider to take care of what is the historic variances.
And if there was something there for a piece of property, and say the homeowner didn't know, and then they sold their piece of property, and the new person came and said, "Oh, look at that. I found this." If it's past that time, then they can't do it anymore.
Correct.
Even though they didn't have a chance to do anything about it?
Well, that variance goes with the property. So if, you know, if someone next April were to buy a property, well, you've noticed residence, and you would notice it properly, that you have to use it by this time period.
Right.
So that would mean in that two-house case, you got a building permit by that time period so you could use it.
Right.
I mean, the only caveat to that that doesn't go away is if a lot was legally created that was a non-conforming lot, that lot still legally exists. So if it doesn't have enough frontage, or it's too small, or those lots still legally exist. That's the only...
Right.
...exception to this. It goes away. That lot can't go away. So...
But the only thing we're going to do is add item 13 and 14.
Correct.
The rest of this stuff is just explanation.
The rest of it's just background and the RSAs that sort of give in the bold what you're now allowed to do. The town has the option to do.
Right.
Whereas just variances and special exceptions granted today automatically expire after two years. That's just state law.
That sounds good to add.
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you, if you look at the wording, and this, it's a little bit of confusing wording, or I've run through it with a couple other boards, and people get confused. Make sure you...
You have to put this on the warrant.
You would have to put this on the warrant. So at the next meeting, let's talk about the language of this. I think you guys' consensus seemed to like the idea of it. Let's talk about the nuances of the language, if, you know, if you think I picked the right spot in the zoning ordinance to put it in. And if we get to that point at the next meeting, you could move it to a public hearing.
Okay.
That's what. What's the timing of that? When, because they never have sort of a stop-and-start date for the public hearings?
Yeah. So public hearings, you have to have the first one scheduled usually by about the first week of January. So you have time. Like, if we don't get to this in two weeks, that's okay, but, you know, it's almost October.
Does the RPC have that sheet with the timelines?
It's not out quite yet. NHMA has it. I can forward it to you, though.
Okay, that would be good.
So you need to basically have your zoning, your public hearing scheduled at least by the first part of December, because if there's any delay...
For this, we might as well do it sooner rather than later, not worry about the...
I agree with that, but you can't do it too soon.
Right. That was my, that was my question about how soon can we do it?
And because this one has the potential, honestly, to really impact people getting building permits, we might not want to have the public hearing really until November-ish. I would say maybe like...
Well, that's only a, that's only a month away.
Which isn't that far away.
Right.
Because if somebody wants to pull a building permit, but they're in this flux with, is it legal, is it not?
But they still have three more years.
Yes. But it gets into a lot of nuance with what, that you effectively can hold up a building permit for about 90 days. Building inspectors don't like doing it. Property owners hate it, so let's try to avoid it, I guess, is my...
Okay. Sounds good.
So other than this, are we contemplating any other zoning changes this year?
There are none that I specifically know about. I mean, we can work on that.
Unless we want to put something in about the storage.
But it sounds like that would be much better to put in the site plan.
That's still a zoning change, though. You would have to amend the zoning to take it out of the zoning.
Oh, that's right. It's not a warrant article. Never mind. You're right. Sorry.
No, no, no. The, because you have a provision in your commercial district description that doesn't, that does, I'm sorry, it speaks to outside storage. It doesn't prohibit it. If you want to amend the way the zoning is actually written, that has to be a warrant article. Eliminate, amend, whatever.
Okay.
And then we can put components into site plan, and that does not have to go to the warrant.
Okay. So...
That would be a two-step process.
So we would need to do a zoning ordinance change?
Yes.
Okay.
That change can just be eliminating something, but yeah.
So we probably should look at what we would have to do.
I would honestly, I would look at outside storage in all of your districts to see, is that what you really want, including the village district, which has a complete prohibition? Do you really not want to ever allow somebody to have outside storage? Would there be a unique case? And maybe then we put the outside storage into the site plan regulations where you can deal with individual cases a little more easily.
And if it's in site plan, though, then it covers no matter what district it's in?
Yes. Any non-residential use or residential of three or more units has to have a site plan, major or minor. It doesn't matter.
Okay. We'll have to see if we need it in both places or not, then. Okay. Okay. We can think about that.
And if you want to increase your wetland buffer to 100 feet, we can talk about that, too. But that's a much tougher sell.
Don't throw out a new subject until I finish the last one.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I was just going to ask Jennifer a few, that was serious or...
I only say that because most of the towns around you have wetland buffers that are greater than 50 feet. They're at least 75. It's one of the zoning things that you are, I don't want to say behind in, but are less restrictive of than many of your neighboring towns, if that's of any interest to ever discuss. But that, that's a really big, changing wetland buffers is a really big sell. You need to work with the Conservation Commission. You need to look at properties. So I sort of said that.
Do you want to address that with the Conservation Commission?
It's something that you would want to contemplate for next year, getting that on...
Yeah, there's not enough time now. We have to have the whole year to talk about it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjournment, 8/02.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 8:02.
One hour.